Ready to go, Teresa? You guys ready? Fight. I don't know who's tough subject. I have a stronger constitution that surprises me sometimes. I've gotten better. I'd like to call the order of the Spark City Council meeting of Monday, February 22, 2016 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a council, a quorum, thank you.
Okay, before we get into the meat of the agenda, we'd like to have a quick word by Ms. Ratty, please. Go ahead, Julia.
Thank you. Our city, our community, our state, lost an amazing, amazing friend this weekend. She was a personal mentor and a friend to me, but if you've been watching social media, she was a personal mentor and a friend to hundreds of people. She was possibly the most giving person I've ever met and was the epitome of what it means to be a public servant. I don't think anybody really knows how much she gave up to do as good of a job as she did representing all of us in her many roles. And so I just did want to take a moment today to honor her, to honor her memory. And if you would, please join me in a moment of silence to honor State Senator Debbie Smith. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. That was very good. Appreciate that. I know that was tough, too. Okay, let's move into opening ceremonies. First, we have the invocation speaker, Pastor Pete Vosler of the Cross Winds Assembly of God. Would everyone please stand, please? Welcome, Pastor. How are you?
Thank you. I'm doing great. You guys look great. Let's pray. Thank you, God, for the fact that no matter how smart we may think we are as human beings, we are never intelligent enough to govern or make decisions above your great knowledge. And we ask that now, that you would just bless our mayor, our city council, that you would bless our police department, our fire department, and all those who protect us and watch over this great city. Lord, we need your help in many things, and I'm glad for great leadership. I'm glad for the great leadership of Sparks. It's been a privilege to be here for all these years. Just want to honor you, thank you for every participant today, for you are good. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. That was very good. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. I don't have any cards to speak, but if you want to speak, fill out one of these and we'll get you up to speak under public comment. Anyone? Okay, let's moving on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Ms. Byby.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Byby, to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Next, 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Spark City Council meeting of February 8, 2016, the Spark City Council workshop of February 8, 2016, and the Spark City Council concurrent meeting of February 1, 2016. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 6.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 7.0 announcements, presentations, recognition items. First, we have a proclamation for International Women's Day. Who's here to accept, please? Come on up. And Ms. Byby's going to read that for us, so have a seat and then she'll present you the proclamation.
City of Sparks proclamation. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas International Women's Day is celebrated in many countries around the world on March 8 to recognize women for their achievements without regard to division, whether national, ethnic, linguistic, cultural, economic, or political. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 8, 2016, as International Women's Day. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sparks to be affixed this February 2016. Gino R. Martini.
She's going to present you the proclamation. You have anyone here you want to take, wants to take a picture or anything?
Yes, International Women's Day, the activity is going to be on March 8 at La Vida. We have two of the award recipients here with us. Estela Rodriguez, she's going to be one of our award recipients.
Great.
Daisy Rodriguez is going to be the other award recipient for the City of Sparks. She came in the wrong way. And our third award winner is right here.
Grand entrance.
She came the wrong way.
Okay, could you give us your name for the record, please? I'm sorry.
My name is Siomara Rodriguez.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So Charlene's going to get that. You have somebody here that wants to take a picture with you two?
Why don't we have all the award recipients up there?
Lord of the mayor.
You bow. And stop the violence, Teresa. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have 7.2, Black History Month. Somebody going to come on up for this? And I understand, is Mr. Gilmore here, too? Mr. Gilmore not here? Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then I'll bring it up to you, okay? Whereas each February, we recognize the courage and tenacity of the numerous hardworking African Americans whose legacies are woven into the fabric of our nation. We are heirs to their extraordinary progress. Racial prejudice is no longer the steepest barrier to opportunity for most African Americans. Yet substantial obstacles remain, the remnants of past discrimination. And whereas African Americans dedicated to prompting their culture and promoting their culture and history through determination, perseverance, intelligence, and hard work have made lasting contributions to Sparks and to our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and fine arts. And whereas the City of Sparks, Nevada, will always strive toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens are recognized for their contributions to our community, state, and nation. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim February 2016 as Black History Month in the City of Sparks and encourage citizens everywhere to celebrate the countless contributions of African Americans. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. My name's Andrew Barbano. I'm first vice president of the Reno Sparks NAACP. I'm joined today by four-time former President Lucille Aiden, and four-time former President Lonny Feimster, and quite a delegation. We ask you one thing. Help us make that proclamation mean something. On January 22, 2007, Lucille and I were in this chamber when the council unanimously voted to establish a diversity commission. Nothing has ever been done on it. A week and a half ago, the City of Reno, at the behest of Mayor Shivi, directed the city manager to start researching establishment of a human rights commission. We have offered to work with them to establish a human rights commission, as we offer to work with you on a diversity commission. And since cooperation between the municipalities seems to be a growing trend, perhaps Reno and Sparks could work together on that one. So if you want that proclamation to mean something, help us follow through on something that's been in the hopper stagnant for nine years.
And I see our city manager taking copious notes.
And don't forget our poetry contest at Paradise Park this Saturday afternoon. RenoSparksNACP.org for more information.
Come on down, please give us your name for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Charles Duarte. I'm the CEO for Community Health Alliance. I'd like to thank Mayor Martini and Councilwoman Ratty for inviting me here today to present some information to you on our organization and what we're going to be doing in the City of Sparks, and what we have been doing throughout the community of Washto County. So let me pull this up and make sure I can get this presentation going. I know your agenda's long, and I will be brief. So Community Health Alliance, or CHA, is a nonprofit, tax-demined organization in northern Nevada. We're a federally qualified health center, and we offer high-quality care to members of the community regardless of their ability to pay. We provide medical, dental, and behavioral health services, and many other specialty Our mission, again, to provide quality, affordable, comprehensive services to all. And one of the things that we are is a medical home for patients. We're not just seeing patients on an as-needed basis, but we want to have them feel comfortable to come to us as a medical home. And we've received national awards as a patient-centered medical home from the National Committee on Quality Assurance for the work that we do. We've also received numerous awards for quality of care, including one from the federal government recently. We use a team care approach to medicine, as well as behavioral health services and dental services. So we use not only physicians, but other team members. We're licensed and unlicensed professionals that help out with patient care. We've got about 27,000 patients in the Washto County area. We do about 81,000 visits a year, and that was for last year, excuse me, 2014. We've done about 100,000 visits, medical, dental, and behavioral, in 2015. If you look at who our patients are, 35% are uninsured, 50% are on Medicaid, which means they're very low income, 60% are Hispanic. And in terms of zip code distribution, you can see the large number of patients in that population that reside in Sparks, in the 89431 zip code area. So we've got about 7,000 patients at or around the Audi Boulevard area, and so they travel a long way to see us, but they won't have to forever. We have 221 staff. It's probably about 225, since I put this together and sent it to the city clerk. And includes 22 medical providers, four behavioral health providers, 10 dentists, hygienists, pharmacists. And these are our locations. So right now, we currently have locations down, if you start at the bottom, at Neil Road at Miguel Rivera Park. We have a health center located on the campus of Worcester High School, one on Wells, the Wells Medical Dental Center, which is our largest. We have a center for complex care that takes care of patients with serious chronic medical problems, located right next to the Wells Health Center. One on Fourth and Record Street at the Homeless Service Center. One way up north in Sun Valley, and soon, one in Sparks. In fact, we hope to open up our Sparks Health Center, which is going to be located in the Plaza 800 complex, right next to the United Cerebral Palsy thrift store. We're going to open up a modular center there, a temporary unit, to start seeing patients next month, and be fully built out in August, seeing patients in our new health center, which is going to be 6,500 square feet with four medical providers, two behavioral health specialists, nutritional counseling services, and hopefully dental services very soon. This is the array of medical services that we provide. So, you know, we think of primary medical care, that's what we do. We do pediatrics. We integrate behavioral health services and provide an array of other services to our patients at all of our health centers. Again, we provide behavioral health services, and we do it in our health center because quite often patients who have mixed problems, medical problems as well as behavioral health problems, will show up for their medical visit, often not for the behavioral health visit. So if we can catch them there, get them the counseling and therapy that they need, as well as their medication management, then we can take care of them and keep them out of the emergency department, and hopefully for a lot of the homeless individuals that we serve, out of jails. We provide a wide array of dental services to low-income families throughout the community. In fact, we're one of the largest dental providers to low-income communities, low-income families. And so we have our main medical dental center located on Wells Avenue with 18 dental operatories. And then we have mobile programs, including one that goes to 10 locations a month in the Reno area and Sparks area, as well as a children's mobile dental care program that puts sealants on kids' teeth throughout the Washto County school district. Our cavity prevention program goes to 25 schools per year. These are elementary schools. We put sealants on second graders' teeth. We screen them for other dental needs. We provide oral health education and nutritional education, all free of charge, to the school district. And we have partnerships that we work very closely with. We have a partnership with the Northern Nevada Dental Health Program. We provide low-income uninsured kids through their pro bono services with dental services. And we also have a great program called the Adoptive Dental Program, which has served almost 600 veterans since its founding. And we provide pro bono dental care, which includes emergency services all the way through dentures. You have to be, if you're going to get VA dental benefits, you have to have been injured in the line of duty in your mouth, or have been a prisoner of war for more than 30 days. We had a gentleman from Vietnam from that campaign, and he was a prisoner of war for 29 days and didn't qualify for VA benefits. So we take care of their dental needs. And again, this doesn't take any federal estate money. It's free of charge, and it uses a lot of pro bono services throughout the community. We also have homeless services available for patients who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, not only located at the Fourth and Record Street location, the center for the homeless, but throughout all of our health centers. And similar services will be available in Sparks once we open up there. Our school-based health center just opened last December. We're really excited about that opportunity, excuse me, that was in December of 2015. And it's been a great opportunity for us to provide services to the schools listed here, Worcester, Vaughn, Booth, Corbett, Loder, and Veterans. And we'd be glad to talk to anybody about moving into the Sparks area as well. And then we have nutrition programs available in 10 locations throughout the Reno Sparks area, as well as the North Valleys. This not only provides nutritional counseling and education to low-income women and kids, but also breastfeeding support. We have people that can assist with enrolling individuals in insurance or in Medicaid. And we've recently started a pediatric nutritional counseling program for kids at risk of obesity or who are obese. And we have a great little program that our doctors use. It's called Reach Out and Read. They take a book that's age-appropriate and gender-appropriate into every wellness exam with the child and the parent, and they demonstrate proper reading behaviors to the parent. And through this program, they've been able to show that a child enters kindergarten with a six-month advancement on their reading level, so they come in prepared for kindergarten. And we partner with a lot of folks in the community, and are certainly interested in partnering with all of you. And again, I know you have a long agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, so feel free to ask away.
Questions? It's ready.
No questions, just a comment. Perhaps an offline conversation at some point about what makes a book gender appropriate, but we don't have to do that here.
Okay.
You and I, we can talk.
Yeah.
But I just want everybody to know, the Community Health Alliance serves a critical role in the safety net for families in our community, and has for quite some time. They weren't always under this name. Some of you may have known them as Hock before the merger with St. Mary's Nonprofit Medical Services. Super innovative, have been really creative about, and that's more easily said than done when it comes to healthcare, in making sure that the people in our community who need it the most actually get the services that they need and deserve. And Mr. Duarte himself has been a champion for these populations for a very long time. So I just want you to know that this is really good stuff, and it is very exciting that we are finally seeing those services come into Sparks, and it will make a very big difference for particularly Awards 1 and 2, but our entire community. So thank you for coming to the neighborhood.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, Presentation, City of Sparks, present preparation in the Washto County, participation in the Washto County Emergency Management Accreditation Program.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, Chris Seeru, administrative services director for the record. I have with me Mr. Aaron Kinnison. Most of you know Aaron, I believe, as the Washto County Emergency Manager. Recently, we went through a diligent process to become accredited with the Washto County Emergency Plan, and I've invited Aaron here to tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and citizens of the great city of Sparks, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. This is actually kind of the result of a vision that your city manager, Steve Driscoll, and my boss, John Slaughter, and current boss, Al Rogers, have had for some time, and that is to validate the actions that our region, our communities have taken to prepare the community for disasters and crises. And, excuse me, we applied for the Emergency Management Accreditation Program, and they came and visited our building up on the hill, the Regional Emergency Operations Center, and talked with your staff, the staff of the city of Reno, and the county, as well as our regional partners, and examined the emergency management programs here in the region, you might say, soup to nuts, and looked at all these disciplines and regional partners. I cannot say enough about Chris's role in it, Chief Allen from your police department, Chief Garrison from Fire, and all the regional partners. It was an examination of all of our disciplines of emergency management and all of our hazards, of which you are aware, the top three are earthquake, wildland fire, and flooding. Your flood response action plan was one of the centerpieces, actually, that they were looking at when we looked at plans, validity of plans. So this was an accreditation process. It was a voluntary assessment that we went forward and asked. We said that we believe that our region is as good as any and better than most, and invited them in. And it was seven experts, and they actually looked at our plans electronically, the different plans and actions of our region, four months in advance, but then came here on the ground for a full work week. Seven separate assessors met with your staff, our staff, and looked at 64 different areas, 105 different requirements. Very, very difficult to make it through an assessment like this with all goes, if you will, with all areas being judged as, you know, at the appropriate level. And we should be proud that our region is one of the few that received 100% first-time goes. Now, I guess what I want to stress to everyone is, what this means is, at that point in time, all the actions that we have taken, the City of Sparks, the regional partners, are deemed as best practices throughout the country and actually across nations. But I always say that we're only as good as our next event. We have really good, solid plans. We have really good, solid people. And I just encourage everyone to please stay focused on preparedness. And again, I think, especially I look over at Councilman Smith, thank you for coming with us to the FEMA schoolhouse here a while back, and it's actions like that that make our region. And it's actions like that that make our region great. And to that end, we have a very small token of very big appreciation to the city of Sparks for working on this project, so thank you so very, very much.
Okay, questions? Any questions, comments? Great stuff, folks, really. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Seeing none, look for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve Agenda Items Eight Point One and Eight Point Two.
Do you have a second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve Consent Items Eight One and Eight Two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. General Business, consideration and possible approval of a funding allocation recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for 2016 special events. Uh, I was gonna do this, Mr. Mayberry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I'm Adam Mayberry, your Community Relations Manager, for the record. Good morning. Item Nine Point One is kind of a poll over from the last meeting. It's one of the expenditures approved by the Tourism and Marketing Committee, two thousand dollars, to the Sparks Rotary for Kids Free Fishing Day. I recall they missed the deadline, and no fault to their own, I think it was a minor oversight, but that's what's on the table at the moment. concludes my remarks.
Mr. Lawson.
As a Sparks Rotarian and past chairman of Free Fishing Day, I thank the city for considering this. Can't believe it, we spend about twenty-five thousand dollars each year on this event as a Rotary Club, all a hundred percent donation. We charge nothing to the kids and the parents, give away fifteen hundred fishing poles and T-shirts and about two thousand hot dogs, sodas and chips, and all kinds of free things along, bounce houses and the whole nine yards, and put about eight thousand fish behind roughly twelve hundred foot of net, just so kids can experience the fishing experience. So we appreciate the, you guys holding this over for us. We won't be late again, I'll guarantee you.
Any comments? Okay, look for a motion. Mr. Smith.
You know, and I also want to point out that we actually have two days. June ninth is, that's a Thursday. That's for disabled folks to come down and fish, and they get all the help that they're required. And then on Saturday, June eleventh, is actually the Free Fishing Day for everybody else. So I move to approve the, um, the funding from the Tourism and Marketing Committee.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve Agenda Item Nine Point One. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you to the committee and thanks, Ed, and the Rotary. It's a wonderful deal. If you go down there, you'll just see a bunch of kids having a good time. Yeah, it's super, so. Okay, Nine Point Two, consideration review and possible acceptance of a grant from the Union Pacific Foundation for five thousand dollars. Ms. Burge, welcome.
Uh, in, later last year, I applied for this grant. It was the first time we've applied for the Union Pacific Foundation grant-making process. When I spoke to the grants administrator, she was very interested in special events because it would make a wide impact for her grants money. And so she would want, she wanted me to look at places where I could help a lot of different events. And one of the things that we're gonna be using this money for is to buy barricades that will save the event producers from having to rent them at each event.
Great. Questions, comments? Ms. Ratty.
Ready to make a motion?
Go for it.
I move to accept this grant from Union Pacific Foundation, and the amount of five thousand to purchase equipment is outlined by staff.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve Nine Point Two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, and thanks to the Union Pacific, if anyone's here from, or not. They've been great partners for, with us for a long time. Fireworks comes to mind. They're one of the key, key pieces we need to use there, so they've always been very, very good with the city and been good partners, so thank them. Yeah, thanks. Okay, Nine Point Three, consideration discussion and possible adoption of Resolution Number Thirty-Two Eighty-Nine to adopt the Washoe County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good afternoon.
Press and Aaron again.
Mayor and Council, Chris Severson, Administrative Services Director, having a little bit of deja vu. With me, I have Aaron Kennison, Emergency Manager for Washoe County. And we wanted to bring forth to you today the All Hazards Mitigation Plan, which I know was received in your packet, the bulky report. Starting in 2003, FEMA required that each jurisdiction adopt a multi-hazard mitigation program, and is required that we look at it every five years. We have completed that review, and Mr. Kennison is gonna share with you that process.
Thank you again, Aaron Kennison, for the record, your county emergency manager. I'll just say that I work with Chris and many of your staff day-to-day. It feels like I've been, it's been a long time since I've been before you formally, so my apologies for doing it twice in one day. Okay, the, just as quick background, as Chris said, this is a FEMA requirement, but more importantly, it's the right thing to do. Every five years, we look at the different mitigation projects that we have around our region, specifically City Sparks, City of Reno, the county, even our two tribes, and this year, the Truckee Meadows, or, excuse me, the Truckee River water folks, and validate the things that we can do to either eliminate or reduce hazards in our region. And there's a ten-step process that really took us over a year, it's almost a year and a half, that we worked on this. And it's quite extensive. We look at things that have happened in the past. We look at things that may happen. We do hazard vulnerability analysis. And as a result of that risk assessment, we come up with ideas that are brought forth by everybody from your public works, first responders, to determine, you know, what are the top things that we can accomplish in the next five years. And so we come up with a list of those projects. We try to make sure that they are really within the realm of possibility. So there, there's, there are quite a few of them, but there are much less than, than we could envision, to the ones that we think we could do in five years. And, and to that end, we did outreach to the citizens. We did a series of public meetings. Some were very well-attended, some not so much. We learned some lessons on, on timing. But we reached out to the community, told them, here are some of the projects that we're looking at, asked for input. The people that we met with seemed very positive. And the final step then was to send the plan to FEMA. It went, underwent a review. They sent it back and said, your plan is approved for the next five years, subject to each of the councils and commissions adopting that plan. And so we're here today kind of as administrative step to ask you to adopt it. There were a couple handouts that you should have received. One of them pertains to elected officials in emergency management. The other's kind of a redacted version of the plan, kind of talks, big picture of some of the projects. To that end, subject to your questions, we're asking that you adopt the plan today.
We do have a Resolution Number Thirty-One Ninety-One that we would ask to, you to adopt, to formalize the review and adoption of the mitigation plan.
Questions?
That's not the one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty-Two Eighty-Nine, yeah.
Teresa, could you confirm the resolution number?
How about Forty-Eight Seventy-Two?
I have Resolution Thirty-Two Eighty-Nine.
Thirty-Two Eighty-Nine, I stand corrected.
No shushing.
Thirty-One Ninety-One was probably the last one that we did.
Questions? Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Kennison's comment earlier. I think it was October of fourteen, wasn't it?
It was.
We went back to Emmitsburg, and there were seventy-five people from Washoe County, which included Reno, Sparks, the county, the airport, the tribe, medical from the health department, the coroner was there. And we, it was a week-long effort, and it was truly a regional effort that we had. And it's, it just shows that when you come together as a, as a region, as the county, you can get a lot of things accomplished, and it was quite a learning experience, so. And I want to thank you for that opportunity. You put on that class, and it was good. It was cold when we went to.
It was.
Battlefield that day. It was very cold, but thank you. It was great.
You're very welcome. I appreciate everyone's participation. And when it comes to public safety, it's very, very important business.
It was, it was good.
Ms. Bybee.
Ready for a motion?
You betcha.
Hey, I move to adopt Resolution Number Thirty-Two Eighty-Nine for the adoption of the Washoe County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Ms. Ratty.
Second with a thank you for the Cliff Notes.
Okay, motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve Agenda Item Nine Point Three, Resolution Number Thirty-Two Eighty-Nine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
I think everything that's been said here is very important for us to think about what's happened in this community. We have a lot of major events that can happen. We've had several that have happened in the last twenty to thirty years. And one of the things that I'm very proud about with Sparks is having led us into, and now with Chris and the department heads filling in. This was something that we did when we were told we had to. And now, on a monthly basis, we meet with a core team of the people that would be in the EOC at the beginning of any event, and we talk about the things that are gonna be coming up, that could come up in the next month or two, so that we're thinking about our plan and reviewing it on a regular basis, and then we, and then we attend drills and do a drill on our own. Aaron made a very good point. We're only as good as we've trained. And I'll make it even more of that. We're only as good of, as what we've trained to lately. And so your first responders do a lot of things on a daily basis. The Public Works function also does things on a daily basis that are emergency-based, and we work through those. But working together as a team is very, very important. And what we have found over the last two decades of the work that we have done, really since the nineteen ninety-seven flood, so not quite two decades there, we have taken this seriously, and we have our monthly meeting and we do our drills, our people are not looking at it as it's something they have to do. They're looking forward to it as something that they want to do to help the citizens. So I'm very proud of this organization. I'm very proud of the council for supporting us, and you folks have taken, when asked to participate, have always taken it seriously with us. So I'm just very proud of the organization in total. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, folks. Appreciate it. Okay, Nine Point Four, consideration discussion and possible action to approve a change order for the additional funding of forty-four thousand, one hundred and four dollars for the Regional Base Business License and Permits Program. Uh, there he goes. Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, your city manager, for the record. Before I get started, I do want to recognize that this item's related to the partnership that we have in the valley to bring forward a new and more advanced business license and building permit system. It's something that we've been working on for more than three years. It's been formalized as a regional project for more than a year and a half. And in the audience today, we have regional partners. We have the City of Sparks's project managers, Neil Crutes and Chris Iverson. We also have technical team members. Bring it back. Use your hands. We have the health department is here. We have the county is here, and they are the project managers, and we have the city of Reno. These folks have spent a lot of time together over the last eighteen to twenty-four months, everything from negotiating the contract that we're talking about to where we find ourselves today. What's in front of you is a change order request that's required by our inter-local agreement that you agreed to back in two thousand and four, when we developed this project after going through very extensive RFP and completing a very detailed summary of work. The partnership between the four entities came together. We agreed to have the county be the manager of the project in general, as well as the fiscal agent, because it was easier to deal with the vendor from that standpoint. We've worked diligently to have this project go forward. We knowingly were aggressive on the time schedule, and because of that, it was also aggressive on the amount of savings that we would receive based on the time schedule. As I've briefed you over the last couple of months, we've struggled to the point of failure on this particular project. And it's been for a lot of reasons on both sides. So we've done the best we can as we've gone through, with the technical ability we have from both the vendor as well as our partners. We've come together, and with this project, with this change order gets us back on track, and within an eighth-month period of time gets us to where this project will be up and online. So while it's unfortunate that we're here asking for additional monies, and it seems like a lot in comparison to the total, but the reality is there was just an awful lot that wasn't known by either side. We have challenged them as much as they have challenged us, and therefore you would see in the detail that while the actual dollar value of what the change order should be is in excess of three hundred thousand dollars, it's been heavily discounted by Acela in an attempt, as a partnership, to, to recognize their deficiencies and go forward. So what's changed and why would I recommend this, being the champion of the project from day one and encouraging you to spend more than a half a million dollar of money and then asking you for some more? What's changed is with the assistance of the county and the partners, we now have Acela on a more strict schedule of a critical path to complete the project in the next eight months. There's some specific milestones that state whether or not we're staying on the critical path, and if we don't, and if, for any reason, Acela does not meet those critical components, then the monthly progress payments that are scheduled are not paid until they meet those timeframes. That was not the case in the original agreement. It was just time payment, and the first of the month came around and you paid. That was what we kind of agreed to, and we realized we would not do that again today if we were doing that. So we, we have been working diligently since February, or December, when we kind of finalized this change order and have worked itself through. There were enough glitches in it and some things that we were concerned about, that that is why it's only coming to you at the end of February instead of in December, when the time period actually started. The team feels very confident, and I feel confident as City of Sparks's champion on this, that this is unfortunately, we're kind of past the point of no return in some things. The benefits outweigh the additional expense. What our customers will get from a regional standpoint and the ability to provide services internally, as Sparks, as its own component of the regional component, this product is absolutely necessary. And so with that, I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have, but I'm asking that you approve this change order so that we can complete this project.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt.
Could we have the presentation on the next item too at the same time on this?
I'll be happy to.
I get the full story here before I start asking questions on it. Is that okay?
Sure.
We can vote on it separately, but I'd like to hear this whole story.
Yes, we will need to. They're, they're different actions. So Mr. Schmidt is talking about Agenda Item Nine Point Five. Again, dealing with Acela, and again, this is specifically dealing with the City of Sparks. While there may be some repercussions and some partnership from some of the other entities, this one is really towards us. Quite a while ago, when the Business Enterprise Fund started, one of the things that we recognized that we needed to have was electronic archiving capability. And to that extent, there was a lot of research done, and we installed a program called Application Extender. So since that was brought in a long time ago now, all of the city's archiving has been put into electronic archives using the App Extender program. And so that is much more than the building and permitting pieces, and it's much more than the business licenses. It's actually all the work that we do from the council's perspective that we archive. So when we originally were looking at this program, it was unclear whether we would be able to use the archiving methodology inside of Acela, or whether we would need to create some kind of bridge. And it wasn't felt at the time that we were talking about it that a bridge either direction was gonna be very much involved. Since that time, as the, as the program itself has been, the entire program process has found itself to be more complex than maybe Acela thought it was, or we represented to them. itself to be more complex than maybe Acela thought it was, or we represented to them, we're to a point to where we need to bridge our electronic storage. We have two choices. We could create a bridge going from our work to Acela for all the business licenses and the building permits information, and we could even, over time, backload data. That would have us still owning the App Extender Program, paying for the additional module for the archiving under Acela, and our staff would be working under two different methodologies of retrieving archives. We thought it best, and what this agenda item is asking us to do is asking permission to negotiate that transition programming. It's been tentatively estimated at no more than $57,000, and that would be a bridge from Acela into App Extender, and therefore, the city would be able to use one archiving program for all of its archiving across the board. And we believe that that's an opportunity cost, that while there's some money upfront that wasn't originally contemplated, that it makes more sense to spend that money and use our entire system across the board than to spend something similar to that and have two systems to go forward. So, with that, I'll answer any other questions.
Questions on 9.4 or 9.5? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe we just go back and do a little bit of institutional knowledge, and the mayor can go ahead and fill in the blanks here if I'm wrong on some things. Steve, this was the only item after probably almost three years of joint consolidation meetings every single month that the mayor and I attended, that we were able to, out of hundreds of items, that we were able to come to conclusion that this is one thing that would benefit the community and we could do as a region.
That matches my recollection, sir, yes.
Okay. I also remember when this item came forward, that the original thing from Acela was if the neighborhood of $1.7 million to go ahead and put this program together, you know, for the three entities. I know it was...
That was the grand, that's basically the grand total, plus or minus a little bit of what was contracted by the four agencies for this system, yes.
You know, I, you know, been in business for 40 years, understand change orders, I understand all that kind of stuff, but I also understand that, you know, the community's watching this thing. You know, we've hyped this thing up now for five years, that this was going to be coming, and this is what we're going to do for all the businesses, this is how we're going to, you know, help reduce costs and everything else like that. And so, I support the change orders, because I think it's part of doing business, but I also put out the word that, you know, this needs to be done, you know, because the community is watching, and, you know, this is the problem when people say, "We wanted to, we want to take three different departments from three different entities, and we want to combine them, and we want to make a, you know, a hugely successful thing," is very hard to do. And so, I support you, also with the caution that this needs to be done pretty quick, you know, the community's waiting for it. So, Reno and Washoe County, you know, Sparks employees, let's get it done, let's get it done.
Thank you, sir. Steve Driscoll, again, for the record, your message is received loud and clear, but it is behind a couple other people's voice in front of you that's pushing pretty hard on this. So, the interest of this council's been pushed very hard for the last couple of months.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to echo Councilman Schmidt's conversation there. It's, I get it, the change orders, but, you know, it's, it just keeps going on. We need to get going, and I can't stress that enough. If there's another change order, this is going to be entirely different conversation. So, I hope this is it, and we're going to go live on September 22nd or 21st, whatever the number, the date is, and make this happen. As you know, I'm a big proponent of using the digital age, and it will save us money in the long run, I get that, but at the same time, we're in a steep curve right now of increasing in our business, and this thing needs to be online, so our people can work through the bugs and learn how to use it as an effective tool to deal with the public. And after all, that's what we're in the business of, we're customer service to the public. So, I get it, and we're going to move forward, but please, let's not have any more change orders, and let's, no more excuses on either side, let's just make it happen.
Yes, sir, thank you. The team is listening to what you just said.
Ms. Ratty?
Just to echo the importance, we're all really looking forward to the outcome on this. I think the reason to push forward, of course, is because this is going to be a great service for the people who live in our community. As our representative to the Board of Health, I just want to chime in and be on record that the Board of Health takes this project seriously, and we're keeping an eye on it from that aspect as well, and I will carry forward that message to the Board of Health staff, even though they're sitting here in the room and already know that it's an important project, and everybody will make it a priority.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
I just have one question. Since we have the change order, and I do support, this absolutely needs to happen, and we need one system, not two, that doesn't make any sense. We're trying to streamline things and use technology, the second agenda item for interfacing the two needs to happen, so I support the one. But my concern is, how do we know, given the extraordinary costs and difficulties that we've already had, that you won't be back to us again, that there are no further, is there, as much as there can be guarantees that we won't be back again for another change order and for more funding from us in order for it to happen? That's my only concern. I support what's here today, but anything coming further, I think, the other councilwoman, or Councilman Lawson mentioned also, I don't, I want to make sure that, as much as we can, that we're not being asked again for more funds. We need it to happen now with the money that we allocate. Thank you.
Your comments are well understood, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm already happy to make a motion if the council's ready.
Go for it.
I move to approve change order of additional funding of $44,104 for Acela Regional Business License and Permits Program as outlined by staff, and I believe that's the correct one for 9.4, correct?
Yes. Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Ratty, for agenda, to approve Agenda Item 9.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 9.5, any further discussion on 9.5? Okay, if not, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the funding of $57,000 related to future change orders for Regional Business License and Permits Program for Electronic Document Storage Solution as outlined by staff.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, to approve Agenda Item 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I might, we truly appreciate your support on those projects, it's been a difficult road to hoe, and the team members that are sitting in this audience understand the complexity, and they understand the importance, and we're doing everything we can to be on time with the next date, so thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 10.1, second reading and public hearing of Bill Number 27, I don't, I can't read it, what is it?
2702.
Oh, 2?
2702.
An ordinance providing for the, and conducting a holding of the 2016 municipal elections. Teresa?
Mayor Martini and members of the council, Teresa Gardner, City Clerk. The Sparks City Charter requires that the city council conduct all elections. This ordinance allows us to contract with the Washoe County Register of Voters to conduct the 2016 city elections. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Teresa. Okay, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Go ahead. Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Questions or looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
I'll make a motion, if we're ready.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Bill Numbers 2702, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of the 2016 municipal elections.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 10.1, Bill Number 2702. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Closed-door session, Steve?
No, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Comments from the city council and city manager?
You know, I have...
Go ahead.
I just want to announce on Thursday, the 25th, over at the Boys and Girls Club, they're having a, I'll call it a forum for voting. It's to show disabled folks how to vote, with the new laws, that somebody can actually go in a booth with them this year. They have opinions and, you know, like everybody else does. So, the reason why I'm announcing this is if you could, they would love to have elected officials or business leaders such as yourself drop by and just say hi, and encourage them to feel empowered to go vote, so, thank you.
What time, Ron?
10 to 4, I believe. Washoe County supplying voter machines for them, and I think you're one of the...
Keynote speaker.
Yeah, you're the keynote speaker, you didn't know that, did you? But no, they'd love it if you came over.
And after that comes the mayor pro tem, right, if I'm not there?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Good, okay. Anyone else, comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of February 22nd, 2016, with a roll call. Chairperson, Ratty?
Here.
Agency members, Lawson, Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. Great. I'd like to open public comment, would anybody like to make comment today? Seeing none, moving on to Item 4, approval of the agenda?
Move to approve, Madam Chair?
Second. Approved by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Smith. All those in favor, I'm sorry, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Doesn't look like we have any minutes, is that correct?
They are now attached.
Okay, so, it's the minutes of?
January 25th.
Thank you. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Bybee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 6.1, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of January 7, 2016 through February 3, 2016?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'm 6.2, consideration and possible, oh, the minutes were down there on 6.2. So, City Attorney, are we good?
You're good.
Thank you. Seems like it's pretty straightforward. All right, so, comments from the public, again, any, last chance for any comments from the public? Seeing none? Yep, please. Absolutely, if you would actually come up so that we can get it on the tape, that would be great.
This is more of an interrogatory procedure in bringing something before either the council or this branch of the council for consideration. If you could advise me, I'd be very grateful.
Sure, so, if you would like to just share with us what you're looking for today, the agency member or city manager, Steve Driscoll will take some notes on that. If you would leave, if you would fill in a public comment form, he'll get back in touch with you on the proper way, and he can sort it out whether or not it's a city issue or an agency issue.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
So, do you want to share with us today what you're looking for?
Well, my area of concern is new building projects for residential in Sparks, because there's an anticipated increase in the amount of new building that may occur, and this would be a one-time chance to force the building industry to work at their highest level of competence and quality by revising the building code prohibiting anything less than that.
Okay.
I understand that there are a lot of contrary thoughts to this concept, so I would presume that it would be something that'd have to have some significant discussion, and there would be a lot of input from the industry.
Okay.
My intention, if it was a proper way to do it, would be to list all of the things that I know that should be worthy of consideration, in my opinion, and then allow others to segment that, analyze it, and reach conclusions.
Great. So, I think that that probably gives the city manager enough information where he's going to connect you with our chief building official, and we'll make sure that you have an opportunity to share your thinking.
Well, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And make sure that we get your name and contact information over there with the clerk.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any comments from the agency or chief administrative officer? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, we are adjourned.